Discuss two personnel cases with the intent to return.
All move.
Second.
All fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We want to hear it, right?
Yeah.
We'll be right back, Phil. Can we reconvene the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Can all fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is, um, privilege of floor on any item on the agenda. Okay. Uh, so we'll go right into old business. Would someone like to make a motion that we, uh, review and approve the hiring of Ali Chamose?
Chamois.
Okay. As part-time clerk in the assessor's office effective July 15th, 2011, at a rate of thirteen dollars and eight cents per hour.
Do you want to make that?
Yep.
So moved. Your second.
I'll second.
Okay. I would like to say this person will be used in the, uh, as part of the, uh, property reevaluation process. That's why this person's coming aboard. Any discussion?
It's a replacement. Replacing John. Position, correct?
No.
No.
No. We've got a data collection for that. Yeah. Now, this is a clerk, so they can actually go out and do the property evaluation.
Right.
Okay. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, the next item is, is to, uh, discuss and approve the request by the Goshen Rotary Club to conduct the 24th Annual Tour de Goshen on August 21st, 2011. And George, can you tell us, because you were following up on this?
Yeah. So, uh, Monday night's meeting, we had the, um, uh, certificate of, um, additional insured. And when I read that, Dennis was concerned about it. So I was requested, uh, to go and speak to John Carey and see if that could be deleted. So today, John Carey appeared, so I'm told by clerk, with the last page. And as you can see there, it's received on the 14th today with the description deleted. So I think, uh, things are in order.
Will you make a motion that can be approved?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Well, the only discussion, uh, have they asked for any police protection or anything?
Not specifically.
I'm involved the last two years, I have not been there, like, have requested, so.
Okay.
Okay. Only because we've adopted a policy that, you know, we don't bring extra patrols in at time and a half or whatever.
Right.
They haven't answered any, we'll, we don't have the questions.
And naturally, the police that are on duty will respond.
Right, that's what's my problem.
Absolutely have it. They will patrol that, the areas that they're in.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, before we vote on it, to thank George for following up on this liability insurance, uh, question. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is, uh, go by that one until our attorney comes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, item four. I'd like to discuss the status of the request by the town to the village to expand Hamilton Park Sewer District by seventy-five additional sewer customers. Um, it was two or three weeks ago that I wrote the first letter on this one. And the, the answer we got from the village was to cancel our, unilaterally cancel the, uh, the contracts that we had in Hamilton Park and Arcadia Hills, which I sent, sent a letter saying that really, that people can't do that. But I did go over and talk to the mayor and said, you know, mayor, uh, this is not the time to, to be, you know, indecisive and whatnot. Fact is, there's a, a couple of applicants, Mr. Mumford and Mr. Walker, trying to build a subdivision. And, uh, it is seventy-five new homes. There is over six hundred thousand dollars of upfront money, okay? Give or take. It's in excess, but I don't know if it's all upfront, but that's the potential, okay? It's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of parkland fees alone for our community. Um, and, and so forth. And so I said, you know, I'd really like you to reconsider this. So, the mayor wrote us a letter saying, yeah, we're very interested, but it was still without the written consent to add seventy-five homes. So, I had another meeting with the mayor and said, listen, here's, let me go through it one more time. And that was one day last week, and we have not heard, so, uh, I'm assuming that either it's in discussion or, I, I don't know. So, uh, it, uh, it is, uh, it is what it is, but I'd like to share that with the, uh, guys with the status of the.
So we don't have any written approval?
I have no written approval at all to proceed on.
Does it proceed on to expand the district?
Yeah. Now, one of my concerns, all I have to do is read the newspaper about the housing market. And, you know, it's down forty-six percent in Orange County from June of a year ago. And so, if you've got a builder interested in proceeding on, that we, we need to, we don't have a lot of time here. Don't have a lot of time to be incisive or negotiate or whatever it might be, we just need to get on with it. So, it is what it is.
In that regard, uh, we spoke today about it. Before I came to the meeting, I spoke to David Donovan, the attorney. And, uh, and I, in response to the question, he indicated that the village has done nothing in regards to that issue yet.
Right. Okay.
I mean, that's the status as of tonight, six o'clock.
Okay. The developers said that time was of the essence. Because they didn't want to miss, and they've been at this for about three years, I think. And I know they had some preliminary approval in December from the village. I think it was just based on their engineer's report, whether they had the capacity or not. But that is not the case now. What they said is they wouldn't do it unless we agreed to the terms of, of, uh,
Negotiating the items.
Negotiated items, which one was not to, uh, have any arbitration and a number of things, or they wouldn't do it. So, I think what's happening is we feel very bad, the builders being held hostage for something. And this is great for the community. However, we cannot, not our, our fault, we cannot expand this district without the village saying yes. They'll give them the seventy-five homes.
I know my information was, they had, I don't mean to interrupt.
No.
Uh, I know they had discussed it Monday night.
Uh-huh.
But again, as indicated by attorney Donovan, uh, they have not made a decision.
No, we have not. So, all we can do is relay that information to the developer. It's, you know, it's.
Could I just jump in?
Sure.
And I'm not going into great detail, but there's a lot of money on the table.
Oh, man.
That would benefit the village and the town.
Both of them.
About hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, in addition, there's.
My agency has generally walked away from us, but that's it.
And there are seventy-five more users to spread the base of the cost of the sewer itself. So, that's what's at stake here.
Lot of money. Okay.
Enough?
We can't.
We're gonna wait till you came in. I was gonna discuss the resolution regarding the federal government to rescind, request that, rescind and withdraw the funding for the wetland reserve program in New York State.
Correct. Yeah, but I think the resolution was, uh, prepared by the office and submitted to the clerk's office today. It's about the fifth document inside your envelope. And it's basically, what I call, parrot's the language of the county approval procedure.
Yeah.
And that's just, uh, basically, their, their resolution conformed to our town, if you will.
Right.
And the, the dispositive paragraph being the now therefore, on the first page.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So move.
Your second.
I'll second it.
I'd like to explain to the public who are here. The, uh, the federal government's had since, I think, the year 2008, a, uh, federal government, uh, wetland reserve program. And it's nationwide, it's just not for New York State, just not for the town of Goshen. And what it does, it will, uh, the way it's playing out, is they will pay up, in some cases up to six thousand dollars an acre, uh, for muck land, black dirt. And, uh, and then it will be turned back into non-agriculture use into the wild. And Warwick first came about to look at this and, uh, because I think they may have a farmer over there who wants to partake in this thing. And the downside is, is, let's say you have ten farms, and two in the middle of them, uh, farm three and farm seven decide they're gonna sell their acreage to the, to the federal government for six thousand dollars an acre, which by the way exceeds the, the amount of money, the value that a farmer, another farmer would pay for it. So that's a really a high figure. So if you had two hundred acres, you're gonna get 1.2 million dollars for two hundred acres of black dirt. And to sell that for that price for agriculture, it doesn't happen. So anyway, what, the, the problem is, is if two farmers out of ten and there is somewhere in between, uh, they turn it over and it goes wild. And the ditches fill in, the drainage ditches fill in, it goes to weed, you get a lot of, uh, wildlife in it, et cetera. It makes it much more difficult for the adjacent farmers who want to farm to continue farming. So Warwick, uh, passed a very similar resolution to this. What they requested is they cancel the entire wetland, uh, reserve program. What the county is doing, I don't know if they've done it yet or not, is to rescind or withhold the, these dollars for farm agriculture in the state of New York where you have sustainable agricultural lands. And as the attorney for the town just said, we're doing that, we're following that one. And so it's for the New York State. And what this will be done with this, this will be sent to Senator Schumer, Senator Gilderbrand, Representative Nan Hayworth, and Honorable, uh, Maurice Hinchey. Okay? And so, asking them to take action on this, it doesn't mean it will happen. But it says that we're going on record since we want to sustain our agricultural prowess in here in the town of Goshen. So, with that, is anybody else having to say about this? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll of call vote, please?
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
He's absent.
Uh, Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Caparino?
Aye.
Councilman Nubel?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much.
You know, Doug, I talked to Lieutenant Bahooki, uh, last evening, and he wanted to thank the board for their endorsing this. And I was, he thanked you for your time for listening to him and, and he wanted to work between the future and any other issues.
Right. Well, and you know what, there, there are three people that I talked to on this. One is, legislator Bahooki came into my office and talked to Phil and I. Came to our board meeting, talked to us all. I talked to John Lipinski, who is the president of the Orange County Farm Bureau. And I talked to Bill Johnson, who is a retired farmer, and who is in, kind of fingers in all kinds of farm organizations. And, uh, so, it wasn't without some research that we pulled all this together. Okay. Under new business, the, uh, Dennis, you wanna talk about the item one, review and approve the proposed resolution regarding the settlement of the Eastgate tax sur?
Just so the board is aware.
I don't think your machine's on there.
I think it may be now.
Oh, it is? Yeah.
Just so the board is aware, we've discussed this in the past, and we've, uh, possibly arrived at a resolution of that particular tax sur, for our proceeding. We've so notified the school district, who was what they call an intervenor in the action. We have not had a response back from them. And as such, I would recommend to the board take it up at its next meeting, because, but we will communicate the, uh, potential settlement to the court and to the petitioner nationally. And then hopefully it all goes well, uh, at our next regular meeting, which will be.
It's in, uh, a week from Monday.
Correct. There'll be a formal resolution to, uh, put that in place.
Sounds good. Okay, the next item, George, could you talk about this proposal for insurance on our fuel tank, our tanks?
Yes. Um, this was just received today. Greg Townsend sent it down. And, um, there are certain things that have to go to other insurance companies. This particular thing, liability, is an environmental issue, and it essentially insures, uh, four tanks. As you'll see on page three, the top of the page, there's two two-thousand gallon, uh, tanks and two, uh, two-seventy-four, uh, waste oil and lubricant oil that have to be, were, are supposed to be insured. Um, the last insurance carrier, uh, basically would not write the insurance anymore based on the fact, um, that there was expenses of, oh, I think somewhere in the, of thirty-seven thousand dollars back in 2006. So we had this policy up through, um, I guess May or whatever it was. They wouldn't write it. Uh, Greg Townsend went out to the market and found this particular company, which is, um, a subsidiary of Liberty Mutual. Actually, it's Liberty's surplus insurance corporation. Um, the actual premium now has more than doubled. And it's a ten thousand dollars, uh, deductible, uh, each incident. So, I guess Greg did his, um, due diligence. I guess probably the best thing for you to do is to look it over, that Dennis looked it over and see whether or not we're going to move forward.
He called my offices today, but I did not speak for them, so I assume this one was wrong.
Yeah.
I, I, thank you, George. I think for the, uh, public, what, what this is all about is, uh, when we had the MTBE contamination, uh, there's a, a lawsuit against the town and one also against the county. And, you know, that's proceeding on. And, uh, the company that, that represented us, is still representing us in that lawsuit, but they don't want to renew it going forward because of the, uh, potential high claim, so. But this is one of those kind of areas, whether you're guilty or not. And you fall victim to having to defend yourself, um, at, at a cost. And the cost in this case is, is the cost of the new insurance policy. All right, well, we'll, we'll keep talking on that when our next works. The next one is a resolution authorizing the planning board to utilize the services of Jason Tesero, uh, as an environmental consultant. And, uh, Dennis, you wanna talk a little bit about this one?
Yeah, this is, uh, as you know, the planning board, and this board for that matter, as well as other partners within the town. A lot of times, uh, they have the need of professionals to, uh, address informational items, and or applications placed before the town. And this particular individual comes to us highly recommended as an expert in the field. And, uh, his, his credentials, uh, curriculum visi, has been re, that's what the technical term is, has been, uh, reviewed by the planning board or building inspector, and all the professionals at the planning board level. And he comes highly recommended, and is recommended by them, that, uh, they be allowed to use his services. Why we're doing it in this manner is that in the past, the town board has always hired by motion, if you will, the professional support staff at the planning level. And so they, they felt that that should be done in the same manner, as opposed to today, just going out ahead and retaining. And attached to the resolution is a, uh, again, a, a resume, if you will, of his professional experience, et cetera. And, uh, he comes highly recommended.
So Dennis, when we call for his services generally, the bill is?
The applicant's.
The applicant's bill, so it's the cost to the town.
None whatsoever.
However, we pick the consultant to make sure that we are totally protected in the town.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I suppose there are, there may be an instance at some point in time where the town board of its own wish and may want some environmental advice or professional opinion.
Then the last thing to do is for nothing.
That would be. Yeah, and or, or the position, I would do.
Oh, no, I'm advanced, though.
Or thirty-five dollars an hour.
All right.
Well, I, I think the, what I heard is when it gives the, the planning board a choice.
That's correct.
We currently have one, and this is another one, and so, uh.
That's good.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there someone?
Look at his volunteer, look at his volunteer experience.
I did, yeah.
Tremendous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He also, he wants to do it, he doesn't.
I think a good bellwether is the, the building inspector. And I'm informed that building inspector, uh,
He's great.
Very familiar with him. Uh, did not know this was gonna be proposed and was, again, to say, put in mind that pleased that he would be available.
I'll make a motion that we, uh.
Start the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Madam Clerk, may I have a roll of call vote, please?
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Caparino?
Aye.
Councilman Nubel?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one. Uh, would someone like to make a motion, uh, authorizing the supervisor to pay, pay accounts paper check run of seven fourteen, 2011, amounting to one hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents?
So move.
Your second. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we're open for push to the floor. Anybody want to talk about anything they'd like to talk about?
Doug, before we go to that, I just want to interrupt. And I apologize, I just want to recognize the passing of Rob Hosens, like Harry Alice, uh, this past weekend. Michael Knowles is to heart, to his family, and, uh, will be there for him, but it's a very lost knowledge for the, for him, but for his community, wonderful family.
The whole board shares in your mind, yeah, condolences to the city.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I don't know, do you want me to stand up, sit down, or try to?
The door's right there, just wanna make a quick.
No, I'm, I'm not, you guys aren't getting away that easy.
Well, we're gonna try to limit it to, to, if there's something new.
One to ten minutes.
Well, five.
We'll make five. We'll meet here, right?
We'll have to take all the new information.
Right.
Okay. Did you give me your mic?
Sir, I got one, yeah.
I got it, Al.
Hi, my name is Al Croyle. I live at, uh, the hills of Goshen, uh, 21 Daniel Drive. Tonight, uh, gentlemen, the giant is fully awake. The first matter of attention is corrections to the June twenty-third town board meeting. Statements made by Mr. Bloomfield after reviewing the video. Mr. Bloomfield made three statements. The first is the property donated or given to the town. The truth is, it is the town's property. It had to be given or donated as per proclamation signed into law under the executive order.
We've acknowledged that. Last time.
Yes, we've acknowledged.
We've acknowledged that.
We've acknowledged it, it was.
We acknowledged that it's ours, so let's move on to the next one.
Well, it's.
We're on record saying, yes, it's ours.
It is yours, but it is that of the peoples. In other words,
It's town property.
It's eminent domain owned by the state of New York in this proclamation, signed into the executive order. And it's in the local open space planning guide. And was signed by Governor Pataki and co-signed now newly by the new governor, Paul Ma. So, uh.
But that negotiation is on the D. I guess that's what, that's what we're saying.
Correct. You are on the D, but in essence, what it is saying is for the people. It's not specifically.
Well, well, town property, it's not just how we're gonna use it.
Go ahead, Dennis.
No, that would be accurate, uh, that would be, that would have been dedicated to the town of Goshen. The town of Goshen, uh, owns the property.
Right.
And the town of Goshen is oddly charged with the responsibility of managing it for the benefit of the citizenry. And there are possibility of other citizenry coming to visit Goshen, if you will, and accessing the property, but predominantly.
That's how we use it.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, um.
There's no dispute there, so.
There shouldn't be.
Okay. The reason being is the recourse that you had said stay off the property, it's a liability on it.
No, 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 I didn't say you, I said.
No, you actually need specific.
Well, you said you go on the property.
I just.
So I said, at this particular point, if it's town property and it will be posted, then you shouldn't be trespassing along with anybody else on that property.
But it's open to eminent domain by the state, it's for the people. That is what the.
Not arguing with you, we'll discuss when I, as we move on to the next. Right.
So, uh, the second is the, uh, town supervisor, um, and the second item, contrary to the town supervisor, the town and the state has laws about proper storage of debris and removal of debris. It falls under property management, under the junkyard. In the town of Goshen, these laws have been on the books since the nineteen fifties in New York State Building Code laws. So, Mr. Bloomfield, you better clean up your own backyard.
Let me, let me share with you where we're at in this, because I shared with you, we got this land. You and I and Mr. Robert Knoll and Mr. Mark Warren and Mr. Howland went up and looked at it, looking for dangerous things. When Mr., and I said to Mr. Knoll, you go up and if there's oil cans, gas cans, whatever that could contaminate soil, please remove them. He went up there and made a decision to remove all of this trash, okay? He started the process, okay? And he will continue the process. He told me he would do that, okay? But meantime, the DEC, based on your call to them, came down and looked at it. The man came in on his day off. He, he went up with Mr. Knoll, he looked at it, and he said, I thought we were talking about a super fund site. Case closed. Case closed. This, Mr. Knoll, you continue doing it. This is not a hazardous situation that needs immediate required attention. And so that's what we're doing. So that's where it's at today.
Okay, well, as far as the garbage, debris, contaminated material.
Yes.
In the open space slash recreational area, in accordance with the state and federal governments, the DEC, OSHA, and the EPA, the immediate area should have been cordoned off to wear the general public of the hazardous area. This should have been done when brought to the attention of the town board on June ninth, 2011. It is apparent that the municipal department knows nothing about proper procedures that should take place. So I stopped at the municipal department, and Roger Knoll is not an engineer.
He certainly is an engineer.
By maybe union standard.
No, no, by college degree. He is a mechanical engineer out of RPI.
Well, that's not what the young lady head clerk thinks.
A lot of the issues that we can deal with, and let's move on.
Um, as far as the men who were working in the space, uh, where we're removing the contaminants, uh, I seen one of them on the twenty-fourth, and you had made the statement that, uh, they were, he was sick, or that somebody in the family was sick or whatever.
Was sick.
Whatever. Well, he said he was working the days after the sixteenth on another project.
That's correct.
So you made a false statement as far as.
No, no, it's, yeah. Let me, you know, clarify that for you. Mr. Knoll had his own schedule. He had him on there for a day, he pulled him off. He had him on there for a day, he pulled him off, the man came back, we had two days of rain, and now he's working on other things. They will get to this, based on the DEC looking at it and saying there's no high degree of urgency.
Well, in accordance with the Department of OSHA, they are going to come in and clean up the contaminants. I sent you the letter from OSHA on that. They said that nobody from the department, municipal department, has been trained on how to remove said forth contaminated material.
Excuse me?
And they will be doing that.
Who designated as the hazardous material? You?
No, they're going to be...
That's why we brought the DEC, DEC in. And they said there is no problem there. I mean, I'm just getting a little annoyed because these are allegations against this town board, it has not been designated, they has this waste site. If that was the case, I'd be right there with you, you know, I know all about OSHA, I know all about safety, I take those courses.
Oh, I've taken them though.
But no one's designated, so as far as we're concerned, you're correctly, we're putting up junkyard, don't have to junkyard.
It's falling into the DEPA, when they do testing on this.
Well, when it comes out, that's why, I just want to correct you, it's not a hazardous site as of this morning.
It's not maybe one of these super fun sites where you have...
No, it's not a hazardous waste site. You can get hazardous waste site in a little room in a building in Manhattan if there's asbestos in it, making it hazardous, and then certain laws will kick in. Right here, I think you're making allegations that not really, not really hazardous.
When OSHA comes here, we will meet with them, we will follow whoever it is they say...
They'll be more than happy to discuss the matter with you.
And we rule as well.
And the men that were handling debris, et cetera, they are not certified.
You know, we talk...
To do what? To do what? To figure out garbage, I can do that.
These trashes like we pick up in the trash in the spring cleanup. According to you, it's not, according to DEC, it is.
Well...
Because the DEC...
According to OSHA, it isn't.
Well, when they come down, we'll talk to them, they haven't seen it.
Certainly, if they designate as hazardous, we're...
Absolutely.
...the proper steps.
And if they did remove any of the contaminants in the back of that dump truck, like I've got photos of, they did put basically the general populace, the general public at rest because they didn't double bag it, they didn't...
Per your assessment, that's correct. The DEC came down and said, you know, we see nothing hazardous. And they said to Mr. Knoll, are your people qualified to remove trash? He said, well, every spring we have a spring cleanup, and we clean up trash all over this community, it's fine, that's all you need.
Well...
This is not hazardous material as you have made it out to be.
Well, what I see, I know asbestos.
I'm telling you, we had, we have the DEC there looking at it, now what can I tell you?
I know transmission fluid, I need, no gas.
Okay.
When I see those containers leaking into the ground...
They were looked at by two different people.
Well, I don't know where they were looking, but apparently they weren't looking in the right spot.
All right.
When OSHA council talks, they'll look at it.
We want protection for them till that time. We can't take actions.
Do anyway, we want to do the right thing. You're here, I mean, you have to understand that this town board wants to do the right thing. We, I'm going to, I'm a little concerned at the accusations that where it appears that we're trying to duck or avoid the issue. We do the right thing, so move on with what you need to tell us, and if it's a concern, we'll take care of it. We go far and above what is called for. This town board is very responsive to the citizenry and you, and the safety of this community. So let's not go there, this is the third time around, and all you do is you point fingers and you tell us we're not doing this and we're not doing that, and that's just not this town board.
I know policy with New York City, which is, I think, a little pinky as compared to, you're a little pinky as compared to New York City.
Whatever. We take care of our little pinky here.
I feel with every advisory board basically down there, this gentleman knows it as well. I deal with the electrical unions.
We're sure your credentials are far and above any other, you have told us at every single meeting, this, we have a lot of business to contend up at this particular point. And I don't want to be rude, but if you have something new, then we should listen to it. If it's not new, we'll move on and do the right thing for you and the rest of the citizens. When OSHA comes down, we'll address it. The DEC came down, we addressed it.
Our...
I don't know what you addressed.
Do we?
I wasn't present at the walk through.
Well...
Maybe they walked him to the other side of Route Seventeen.
Okay, let me share this. The DEC went up there with Mr. Knoll, they closed the case because they couldn't find any significant, as you're talking about. Now, we also got a letter here responding to you from the Department of State, and I looked through here about the hydrants, the fire hydrants, the painting, and all these other things. I see nothing in here that we haven't discussed, and I see nothing in here that we haven't addressed with you already. And I also got the note about OSHA, that they're going to come. Because you were...
Okay, well, oh, yes.
I hope they do come, and I'm sure they will come.
They welcome that.
And I welcome them. They can come and see the same.
I think the gentleman should because...
We do, we do. We do, we do.
This is not adversarial, we're trying to tell you we do the right thing.
It's a safety matter, it's only dealing with our development. You guys don't deal with it every day. I watch these kids running by these foundations, and let me tell you, I seen the work that was done on it, and it wasn't done on the twenty-third, the protection around that, it was done on July second.
Have we done anything? Anything else we can do to improve it, or?
Yeah, you can meet state codes with it, because it looked like a six-year-old put it up.
Well, now we've got to take a look at the developer, right?
Yep. The fact is, there's a written communication and a telephone communication where the developer said, you know, it is your responsibility, it is your property, we're asking you to secure these two foundations. He did it, okay? Our building inspector is going to go out there again and look to see if it's done adequately, it's got the right signage, et cetera. It is in motion.
Well, number one, still for three years, there has never been a permit put up in front of even one of those structures.
You brought it in recently. We've taken action on your complaints to us recently, not three years ago. No one came to, you didn't come to us three years ago.
Correct. And but still today, there's still no permits up there.
Just saying what we've done, and...
So in other words, you're just saying the building inspector, if and when he finds time about a life safety matter, when he gets around to it?
You know what? Okay, well, I'm not going to sit and debate it here. I'm saying we've taken action.
Okay, well, then the other matter is dealing with the fire hydrants again.
Right.
There are state and local codes, right in your own code book out of Goshen, and it says basically that it should be the developer that maintains portable water to those hydrants, making them active. And apparently, in the deals cut with the developer with Dexterah slash Burkett Buildings or Exterra Development Inc. slash Burkett Buildings and Management, there were like waivers given to these guys saying that, listen, when the other two developments go in to affect, that's the Meadows and the Hills at Chester, that they may tie these hydrants in. And...
Well, there certainly wasn't a waiver, now waiver's kind of heavy work.
It says right here, it says...
They might, but there wasn't a way to grant the money for it.
This letter, this letter and answer here complains this, however, NFPA two thousand ninety-one is a recommended practice, which is not mandatory language, and is thus not suitable for adoption as a reference standard for uniform code. The Department of State would recommend that hydrants be marked such that the responding fire department is aware that they're not connected to a water supply. We know that the Chester Water District knows they're not connected to water supply. And so, Fire District, so...
But why did ex-board members cut a deal with...
Ex-board members did not...
Or whoever.
Cut what?
No, no.
It wasn't a deal, it was a rule by the planning board. It would have nothing to do with...
Okay, with, how did the planning board let this go with the portable water issue? Because it states in your codes that it is the responsibility of the developer to give portable water to that said developer. And I've got the codes right here, they're included in the queue, and I'm not...
There are lots of developments made in Goshen that have been in portable water, what, probably ninety-five percent of them, eighty, ninety-eight percent of them.
Well, you have individual wells, individual septic, you are not a water district nor a sewer district. And our code puts it that the fire departments, like my home's out in the county with an individual well and an individual septic, when my house catches fire, my barn catches fire, they're going to have to bring water with them to put it out. And that's about probably eighty percent of our town.
I think higher than that.
And if you take the entire state of New York, rural areas, that's what occurs.
We would just have a...
In essence, we're not talking about a rural area anymore, we're talking about a new development.
Not like a rural area. You don't have a water district.
Cultural slash area.
No.
With approved that way, that's fine.
Like I said, there are codes here and how they were waived on letting the developer get away with not giving us portable water, in other words, some type of fire hydrant.
I, you know, you're going to have to deal with the Department of Health who asked them to put her down.
Yep.
It was not the town that asked them.
And you know what the Department of Health said?
What'd they say?
Go to the town board.
Okay, well, that's their prerogative.
You want to petition us for a water district, you get the ten houses there, you petition us to create a water district, and then you'll do all the things that a private water district will do, and that's the pay, you will pay for a water district.
And we will have to pay for it.
Well, you're a water, you're a separate district.
But what happens to all your laws that states that the developer should be...
It's a normal subdivision with individual wells and individual septic.
And it, but it states right here in those codes that the developer is responsible for it, yet somebody let this wave.
No, a developer is not responsible if you're a subdivision with individual wells and septic, where there's no central water system.
Gentlemen, then all I can do is tell you, go to your own town codes.
I don't know what code he's reading from, I forget it. The board knows on a planning basis when the developer comes in, the developer is in fact responsible for perk tests and well tests on the property.
Right.
But if there is no central district, unless a district is created, so when you read that language, they could be referring to the fact that the developer is responsible for each lot to have its own septic system, sewer, and well, you know, water purposes.
Well, Dennis, isn't the portable water in the application of fire hydrants?
Are we talking potable or portable?
Portable.
P-O-R-T.
Yes.
It doesn't have to...
I don't know.
I'm just saying, unless there's a district, unless there's a water district, there is no portable water access, unless, again, speaking of the shaft, which a developer or private landlord would dig or have dug for purposes of making water available to the structure.
I mean, if I'm right, the plan, the developer proposes to the planning board a subdivision with septic and water, but I don't know if it falls on anyone to put in active fire hydrants or anything else.
I'd just like to go on record, your town code eighty-three point five, C eighty-three dash two six, Article Three, ninety-three dash three, ninety-three dash four, ninety-three dash five, ninety-three dash two five, ninety-three dash three oh, Article Seven, ninety-three dash two two, ninety-three dash two three, ninety-three dash two four, and ninety-three dash two five, some of which states that the cost of the developer to supply portable water...
To what?
To the fire hydrants.
Does it say fire hydrants?
I'm quite sure it does say fire hydrants in those codes.
Because...
What you're saying and what happens throughout the whole town is not the same thing.
It makes sense.
Because I mean, well, septic's do not have hydrants. I'm really stretching at this particular point, maybe I shouldn't even say this, but, because I was really on the fringe of that type of thing, but the way I recall this, to best my memory, he didn't have to put in the hydrants.
Right.
That was an enhancement that I don't think he was really too happy that he had to do it. But the planning board, in your infinite wisdom, said that we have to look forward into the growth of this area, and there's going to be other subdivisions, so what we want you to do, in the interest of fire safety and the safety of the people, even though these hydrants are not going to be working for a number of years, we want you to put them in. And as I said, I don't think, I wouldn't be happy either. So you're looking at this as a negative type of thing, and in fact, as I recall it, the planning board actually went above and beyond what they had to do.
I think it was specifically the DOH that made that mandatory.
No, I'm not saying wrong. I'm with George, I was there, as a planning board. They're not mine, it's all the way up to the top of the hill, they want to put an emergency exit there, they actually wanted to connect Whispering Hills to that developmental road. So that's the pipe, I saw it, the pipe is there, if Whispering Hills, to what I call it, was ever built, they'd hook that up and go there and be all, it'd be great, but it was never built. You're right, the developer actually did that in the estimate.
Yeah, and that was another thing that we did, above and beyond this type of thing, because that was a big controversy, is they wanted to open that up so that the people then could have an area access.
Access to our roads, which was sold to us as a private road.
Which would have been a disaster, right, in our mind and in everybody's mind except the people in Whispering Hills.
Right.
So we did the right thing there as well.
Well, that I thank you about, and I stand adamant about that as well, I don't think so...
So did we.
You know, that should be a private, like, road, because that's how it was sold to us. And, okay, now the other matter is the paperwork that I filed for through FOIL, it was the two hundred thousand dollars the town received for the study from Burkett to study the groundwater through our area. I read the report that was initiated by Mr. Bloomfield. This report is online to anyone who has access to computer. It has relevance to the water study, traffic study, economical study, home density study, and the study, it has a table one, Town of Goshen Proposed Development Projects. In that, it's posed as forty-one project names. The study was submitted in two thousand and four. The Meadows was a preliminary, 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 really, approved, but there is no mention of the Hills of Goshen. Even though the Hills of Chester is not in the study, it impacts the logistics with the water supply to our development in the Goshen, and was a concern to the town of Chester, if I'm correct.
So what, what's the point?
What's the point of this? Well, I would ask to, to know really what the actual cost of this whole logistical study was. Do you remember?
Well, you know, two thousand and four, I wasn't, that was two years before I got here, supervisor.
Believe me, Mr. Bloomfield, anybody popping this on this board, myself, and I don't mean Ted, but they probably got all the reports in person at the day, but I was only in there with the last time you said, not even close to being accurate, but I'm listening to you. I wish you just move on.
Because, well, et cetera.
We agree to disagree on that issue.
Two hundred thousand dollars, if I am correct.
I will sound a little shaken, I don't designate for any specific purpose.
Did you say you foiled for that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so whatever information we have, we're obligated to give you, we'll give you.
Well, I already have it, so...
Oh, okay, well, then...
You know, it doesn't make any difference to me, but...
Was that the, was that the, I don't see, I'm from the environmental impact statement.
No idea.
I think that's what, because I believe the two hundred thousand dollars was supposed to come from the town of Goshen. We don't know what's to it.
What I think...
It was found to be additional homes, six additional homes.
What I think...
I remember, what I think they got six additional homes, it was no real designation on what They got six additional homes, it was no real designation on what the town was to do with that two hundred thousand.
I think.
Now, we have reports that it's supposed to be groundwater, I'll look at it, I won't be accurate.
Going back to the first, uh, master plan, two thousand, it was worked out in two thousand and two, three and four.
Right.
There was a water study done, done by Shore de Palma.
Right.
I don't know if this having to do that or not, because it was around that time, but I don't know.
It's like a hundred and seventy-six page document.
That's probably it.
And.
They looked at the entire town.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
It was dealing with.
Every six.
Area.
Home density.
Okay, so what, what is?
Well, my question is, why wasn't the Hills of Goshen on this project somewhere?
Well, I'm sure, they did the entire town, they didn't do it by project, they did by area.
Like, how old areas in that district?
There, there are three aquifers in the town of Goshen, they looked at each one, each one. They didn't look at a subdivision on top of it or adjacent to it, behind it or before it.
It, it specifically mentioned forty-one new developments.
Well, they were.
And it went through.
No, no, there were forty-one potential developments that were thinking or active in terms of their application.
Okay.
Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that they, a lot of them never came to pass.
The Hills of Goshen was already in progress at that time, and we're not even mentioned in this.
The Hills of Goshen was actually considered in the map, it just, one area, it wasn't like York, York Development or Katie Hills, it was a whole area that they designated what will be allowed partly built there based on water. The developed one thousand homes in our area where we live, they might say, hell, enough, you know, enough water. That was, this is a study on for water purposes.
Okay, so we got the study, you have the information?
They did it by area.
It's two thousand and eleven, what's the question, or let's move on?
Okay, now we'll move on.
Okay, I just got minutes.
Not turned into.
Yeah, I thought you just got a couple more minutes, and then we guys.
Because of everybody's recourse and, you know.
Yeah, we're trying to clarify.
Which I, I'm welcome to, because I like to get a response from you guys.
We're trying to straight, try and get straight, back straight, and come down and confirm as you wish.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, I just state my facts, and you guys tell me if I'm wrong or whatever. If I'm wrong, I'll be the first one to admit I'm wrong.
And so, by this point, I think. So Kenny, Kenny touched base on that a second, but I think it's important for you to know, we had water protocols, and we didn't even, we didn't think that they were good enough. We thought that there were problems in certain specific areas. So what we did in, I'd say, two years ago?
Yeah.
Say?
We upgraded the water protocols, and as a matter of fact, there were a couple of
developers that were very upset over that type of thing, because they had done their planning, you know, for years and years and years, and, uh, some of them were very, very upset of that, but water, water quality and protection and, and the amount of homes that you can build in certain areas.
Your home infrastructure.
Have been decreased.
Right. How many showers can go in the well and get the water?
Right. All right. Okay, can we finish it up now?
Yeah, the last thing I just have is, uh, it's basically about the town inspector. Uh, he still has not been there since that protection has been up. Um, you know, I'm home ninety-eight percent of the time. I wish you would just stop by, I like him as a person, I like Neil.
Right.
But he is, and believe me, I know he is overloaded with what he's got on his plate.
He sets priorities.
And he does, he's got priorities, his inspections, you know, reviewing the, the drawings, et cetera. Uh, I know he's also involved in the zoning department and the planning board, he's, you know, he, he's trying to do his thing.
He will be, he will be looking at the, you're talking about the two foundations?
Well, no, I, actually, I gave you gentlemen the whole package of violations.
He did look at that.
You did look at that?
He did look at that.
Because I know, uh.
And he came out to me for three that he thought maybe you had some validity to out of the hundreds, and he said, Doug, I'll talk to him about this.
Well, there was like four hundred plus.
I, I understand.
And it, it's not just, no, a few of them.
It was only seven days in a week, he couldn't get them all.
I, I, I understand that, but, you know, my thing is the concern.
He will begin.
And make sure that the developer does do the right thing, and all of the other developments in this town are following suit, you know, that you guys got, gotta have somebody on the ball there following up on that. Upon that, I, you guys completely have exhausted me. Oh, by the way, I just want to let you know, you said stay out of the field, I was back there with my dog.
No?
No, I was back there with my dog, and I got bit by a copperhead.
Did you?
Right there. So it was either me or the dog, and I'd rather it be me.
Wow, okay.
If one of you gentlemen were back there, I'd take the bite before, you know, I'd let it happen.
You were always right in front of the.
No, I'm, no, that's.
I'm worried, I love it.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Get on safely.
Well, someone like to make a motion that we go adjourn and go in executive session.
Anybody else? Is there else? Anybody else?
Go in executive session with the intent not to return. Uh, we finished item one, so we got into two, which is review correspondence from Allen regarding the MM Orange Inc. versus the town of Goshen, section thirteen, block one, lot seventy.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we did number three, discuss status of the sewer negotiation with the village, and discuss status of the sewer dispute arbitration with the village.
A move.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
All pay or say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Folks, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have it before midnight tonight, I'm scared.
I had that in mind that it was going to be.
Is that?
Two fifty-nine AM.
Oh, God. I might have told you, lock the door, you're way out.
It's poor Kenny, you can't write the book at four thirty, so.
Yeah, well, he knows.